Council meeting of Monday, February. Oh, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, February 27th, 2023. The time is 5:32 PM. And I will do a roll call from my far left, Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Dorset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten. Here. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
And Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Great, thank you so much. And I would like to introduce our staff that's here this evening. We have our city clerk, Josh Stecker, State Administrator Katrina Knudsen, our city attorney, Daniel Kenny, Community Development Director Carl DeCemus, and Associate Planner Jeremy Hammer. We also have Jeff Langhelm in the audience with us and some other staff that are here. We have some officers in the back that are going to be recognized. So happy to see all of you. And I think Shannon Costanti will be joining us at some point, our Human Resources Director. So thank you, staff, for being here as well. And would you please all rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobopch Band of the Pialup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Um, council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Oh, okay, I think. Seconded by Councilmember Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Thank you, council. So, uh, first item is presentation of a Red Cross Month proclamation, and Larry Blythe, welcome. I'm, I'm gonna read this from up here so everyone can hear me, and then I'll come down and present it to you. And if you'd like to say a few words, that would be great. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Gig Harbor, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort to families devastated by local disasters, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, or heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do hereby declare the month, month of March 2023 as Red Cross Month in the City of Gig Harbor, and dedicate the month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. I encourage all residents of Gig Harbor to reach out and support this humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 27th day of February, 2023.
Thank you, hear me alright? Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. On behalf of the American Red Cross, I want to express my appreciation for this noteworthy uh, recognition. I'm sure most of you recognize the Red Cross for the work we do nationally and internationally on all of our disasters. But perhaps most of you aren't aware of the work we do right here locally in the community. Of course, the Red Cross is one of the first organizations unseen in any national, um, national disasters, such as hurricanes, tornadoes, flooding. But in reality, the vast majority of our efforts are done right here locally. As a matter of fact, anywhere from three to five times per night, our disaster action teams are out there in the community, helping out with flooding or other humanitarian issues. Some of the things you probably aren't aware of that we do, however, as was recognized in the proclamation, we're over 140 years old. But you probably weren't aware that every eight minutes, every eight minutes, we're out there in a community across this nation responding to some sort of disaster. Most of the time, it's house fires or it's flooding. You're also probably not aware of the fact that every two seconds, somebody needs life-saving blood. That means we need 385,000 donations of blood on a regular basis. And you're probably not aware of the fact that the American Red Cross supplies 40% of all the nation's blood supply. That's how important our blood is. You're also probably not aware of the fact that of all the workforce of the Red Cross, 90% of us are volunteers. I'm personally a volunteer, serving in multi-capacities. The thing I'm most proud of, however, is the fact that of every dollar that's donated to the American Red Cross, 90 cents goes towards humanitarian aid. And I know that because I've been deployed numerous times and I see the work in action. So it's very important that you understand that and that we're being recognized accordingly. Appreciate that. Lastly, I'm often asked, how can people help the Red Cross? And I always say there's three ways they can do that. One is you can make a donation. Cash is king. Simply going to the Red Cross website, www redcross.org, can make cash donations. The second way is to volunteer. As I mentioned earlier, 90% of our staff is volunteer force, so we're looking for people with all sorts of skillsets from all walks of life. And we especially need really good board members. That's a hint. And thirdly, one of the most important things you could do is donate blood. And I want to thank you, Mayor, because you've stepped up and authorized the fact that we're going to have blood drives right here in this building on a quarterly basis. And the first blood drive is going to be on June 14th. And I would encourage each and every one of you to go to our website, see how we can donate blood, sign up, because the spots fill up very fast. And we'd love to have 100% commitment. And the next go-around actually will be a battle of the badges where our police force goes against the rest of the community. So we're looking forward to that. And again, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to extend, as I'm sure I speak for most of council, our heartfelt appreciation. I am a nurse practitioner. Clara Barton founded my profession. I prescribe blood donations in life-saving situations, often in my work in critical care. So I just want to say I appreciate you, and I'm thrilled to hear about the blood drives, and was going to encourage everybody in both January and February. Those are traditionally very low months for blood donations following the holidays. So I encourage you, if you have the ability, to reach out and donate blood, because it truly does save a life. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have comments? Okay, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all that you do. Um, I would like to welcome our Police Chief Kelly Busey to come forward. We have a special recognition this evening that he'd like to give.
Good evening, Mayor. Did you let everybody know they have to donate blood while they're here tonight, too? That's part of the.
I did not. You'll have to come in June.
And it's so great that so many community members came out to see two of our uh, department members get recognized tonight.
That's amazing.
Amazing. So if I can call forward Detective Sergeant Trey Federicii and Detective Patrick Sam. I guess now it's Officer Patrick Sam. Detectives is a rotational assignment for us, but he was in detectives at the time that this event occurred. And we still use him that way sometimes. Let me tell you a little story here. Over the course of the past four months, Gig Harbor experienced a significant rash of nighttime commercial burglaries. There was no specific pattern to these burglaries, and the target of the thieves was somewhat varied. The businesses victimized by this series of incidents included retailers of tools, cosmetics, paint equipment, even restaurants, auto body repair shops, and convenience stores. In at least three of these burglaries, our officers were behind the suspect or suspects as they fled in vehicles, but we were prohibited from continuing to chase them due to current laws. The Police Department Investigation Section, our name for the detectives, uh, during this crime spree consisted of Detective Sergeant Trey Federicii and Detective Patrick Sam. Uh, these detectives learned of similar crimes being committed in Kitsap and Mason Counties. Number of burglaries continued to climb as more businesses, businesses were experiencing significant losses. Our detectives began to coordinate investigations from these surrounding jurisdictions. Detective Sam utilized a new technology purchased by our department to enhance video taken from several locations to help identify a suspect in at least one of these crimes. Sergeant Federicii took this information and consolidated what we learned from other agencies to hone in on this one specific individual, who was assisted sometimes by a female accomplice. Both detectives even conducted nighttime emphasis patrols of their own, along with our regular patrol officers in an attempt to apprehend the suspect. Soon, we learned that the suspect was in custody on a different charge in a bordering jurisdiction. Detective Sam, uh, went to that county jail to interview the suspect. Now of note, other detectives had attempted to interview the suspect, but he would not speak with them. Detective Sam, however, used a different approach and gained cooperation from the suspect, who provided useful information that connected him with some of our burglaries. Did a good job of developing rapport with that suspect. Before we could get that suspect charged in our jurisdiction, the suspect bailed out of jail and was once again on the run. He continued to commit more crimes, including within the City of Gig Harbor. Sergeant Federicii began to involve the use of more advanced technologies and called upon relationships he had built with some federal agencies. He essentially took the lead for all of the jurisdictions in this tri-county area to develop a game plan and capture the suspect. Last Wednesday, Sergeant Federicii coordinated a large group of police officers, detectives, and federal agents to serve a search warrant at the suspect's residence in Kitsap County, where at least $25,000 in stolen property and evidence was recovered. We're still inventorying that. Simultaneously, while he's on the scene, Sergeant Federicii tracked the suspect through electronic means as he made, made his way through the state of Oregon. While still unseen at that search warrant, Sergeant Federicii was able to direct the Oregon State Police and the Eugene Police Department to the suspect's location in real time. After a lengthy pursuit down there, the suspect and his female accomplice abandoned their vehicle and illegally entered a residence nearby. They, uh, were soon taken into custody by a SWAT team, and they now remain in a jail in Oregon awaiting extradition uh, to our jurisdiction. To date, we've connected that primary suspect to more than 12 burglaries in our city, and he's a suspect in at least two more. Beyond our jurisdiction, he'll likely face charges in more than two dozen cases. If not for the good use of the technical skills and interview rapport building by Detective Sam, or the tenacious multi-jurisdiction investigation orchestrated by Sergeant Federicii, this suspect would likely still be on the rampage, victimizing more businesses and people in our region. Within a group of much larger law enforcement agencies, I'm quite proud to say that it was the investigators, and specifically these two detectives from the Gig Harbor Police Department, who led the way in solving this series of widespread crimes. So in my couple of years at this department, um, I think this is one of the most significant arrests we've ever had. Um, I can't underscore the magnitude of uh, how much damage this one person was causing, uh, in all of these counties. And just an exceptional investigation. So I'm pleased to recognize them today and, and ask you to join me in doing the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for everything that you guys do. I know you have to, I'm speaking as you have to leave, but thank you all. Um, our entire police department is working so hard all the time. I know you guys know that, but I always like saying it again because they really do an amazing job protecting the city, and we're so we're so blessed here in the City of Gig Harbor to have the officers that we have. So thank you, detectives and sergeant for, for all your hard work on this. This was keeping me up at night. Now I can sleep better. So thank you so much. Thanks again for everything. All right, um, my report this evening, um, in partnership with the Pierce County Assessor's Office. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry, council members. Hold on if you're still there. Hey, Chief Busey, is, is Chief Busey, Sergeant Federicii and Detective Sam, are they still here? I went, I'm, I just missed the lights of council members that would like to say something to you. I apologize. Okay, Councilmember Martin, I think you were first.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say in a, in a former life, I got to deal with some people who didn't do things as accordingly as we would like. And, uh, to put it nicely, and the work that you did is pretty phenomenal. It is not an easy task to do that, to get someone to talk to you when that is not in their best interest usually. So congratulations to you on that. I also wanted to say that often when people are entering into these kinds of activities, that they often then start to do something that's going to be harmful to people's lives. So you likely have saved people's lives, because usually these types of criminals start to escalate in their crime, and you should be commended. I hope you feel so proud of the work that you've done. You've done a tremendous job and a service to this community. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorset.
Yes, thank you. Um, Chief Busey, well told on the story and recognition of both of you. Especially given like the restraints that have been on the police department and much more difficult to, you know, work through and bring justice to those individuals and really serve our community. Um, really remarkable. And then also, I think it, it stands to show that Gig Harbor is a city that will not tolerate it and will not let it just go by. And you taking the front lines in that and accomplishing it is something I'm really proud of. So, thank you.
Did, did either of you have anything that you wanted to say?
No, thank you so much for all the support, you know. Um, we're a product of some of the best men and women in law enforcement on a day-to-day basis. Uh, the, the guys and girls on the ground cycle it up to us. So there was a lot of initial work that was done worthy of recognition themselves. But the, the support we get from the citizens of this community, I've worked for several law enforcement agencies, is, is above par. And, and again, the support from the council, you know, we're here because you guys allow us to do this job, and we love it. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. There's one more council person, Councilmember Wood.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you for sending a message to the bad guys out there to stay away from Gig Harbor. Thank you.
Not in our town. That's right. That's right. Thanks again. Thank you for the reminder, Councilmember Lichten. So, excuse me, so I wanted to, um, let everyone know, we are having a property tax exemption seminar here on April 6th from 1:00 to 3:00. This is for seniors over 61 years old or fully disabled individuals who have gross household incomes below $45,708 annually. Um, they may qualify for Pierce County Property Tax Exemption Programs. There will also be information about other programs, including energy assistance, home repair, aging, disability resources, and veteran services. So if you are interested, or you know someone that is interested, or you have a family member that meets these requirements, and you would like to come and learn about this, it will be, um, 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Barbecue to you has graciously, um, agreed to provide snacks. And their snacks aren't just like chips and soda. They're like amazing sliders and other things. So anyone is welcome to come and hear this information right before tax time. So come on out and RSVP if you would to communications@gigharborwa.gov, and we'll be posting this on Facebook and the Gigabyte and putting it out other places as well to get the word out. We'll have flyers that we'll be distributing. We'll have flyers on the outside of the windows, so we'll be getting, um, letting everybody know what's going on with that. Uh, April 6th at 1:00. And then I wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works Department for all of their extra shifts and their extra long hours, keeping our roads ready for snow and ice and whatever else may come our way. We never know these days. So thank you so much, Public Works, uh, Director Langhelm and your team. Um, they really do a great job of keeping the roads prepared. Um, our police department also lets us know how the roads are doing very early in the morning, so we know how to keep people safe. So um, thank you, uh, thank you to our Public Works Department for all of their very, very long hours during this winter season. So I would like to give them a round of applause. And now I will turn it over to City Administrator Knudsen for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, keeping along the good news train here, I am proud to announce that the city has been, uh, awarded an AWC, Washington, Association of Washington Cities Well City, uh, recipient for 2023. Uh, what does that mean for the city? Well, AWC is who we, the city, receive our health insurance through, and so by being a Well City recipient, we will now be receiving a 2% medical premium reduction for 2024, which adds up to approximately $30,000 of savings for the city for 2024. So that's really great news for our budget. Um, and with this award, I'd like to give a special thanks to the city's Wellness Committee, who works tirelessly to produce events that city employees want to participate in, such as, um, our golf tournament put on by the Police Department, um, Halloween potluck, and, um, other such items, and the blood drive. Um, and lastly, a huge thank you to, uh, Human Resources Assistant Diane Bertram. She, uh, makes a lot of these things go forward and professionally puts on, uh, put together our application for this, um, premium reduction. Um, and just is generally great to work with and has the employees' health and happiness at the forefront of her mind. So special shout out to Diane. Um, additional, additional shout outs to Connor Most and Dan Melton of, uh, who are maintenance technicians in Public Works Operations. They both, uh, are now certified water distribution managers through the state Washington, the Washington State Department of Health. And, um, I don't know a whole lot about that test, except for that it is very, um, difficult and took a lot of time for them to study for and pass that. And it definitely brings along benefits to them individually, but as well as the city in managing our water system. So kudos to them. Lastly, I wanted to let the public know that tonight on consent, the City Council approved a three-year contract with our police department. And it's very fitting, the presentation here this evening from Chief Busey, recognizing two of our officers. Um, both sides, uh, the, the union and the city represented, um, their interest fair and in a professional manner. Uh, the result is a contract that will help us retain our existing officers by paying fairly with great benefits. And will also help us to recruit for the four new positions that council authorized in this year's budget. Um, this, um, these two actions, this contract with this passing, it really shows the city's clear indicators of our support for our law enforcement officers and dedication to keep our community safe by providing the best possible service. Um, special thanks to the Teamsters team, Teamsters 117, Matt House and, uh, Mike, Mike Sell, as well as Officers Carson Abel and Jerib Daniels, who represented the Teamsters 117, as well as Sophia Mayby, our city labor attorney, Chief Kelly Busey, and Human Resources Director Shannon Costanti for, um, pulling off such a wonderful contract. It really was, uh, a wonderful work that they were able to put together and something that we're happy to have wrapped up in such a quick manner to get us out there on the streets with our new rates for our officers that are well-deserved. Thank you, Mayor. That's all for my report.
Thank you. Yes, we, um, can't say enough about how hard our staff is working right now on so many things, and our human resources. I call them the dream team because they really are. They are, they are doing such amazing things around staffing and, and the, the Well City Award. Um, so thank you to everybody involved, um, in getting the policing and contract done, and we're so excited to move on. Thank you so much, Katrina. Um, I will now open up the public comment period for non-agenda items. This comment period is for items not on the council's agenda this evening. We are not accepting any comment related to short-term rental regulations during this period. The public hearing on ordinance 1507 was closed on February 13th, and there will be no testimony, testimony accepted on ordinance 1507 this evening. Um, as a reminder, for the benefit of those watching and listening online, if you could, um, keep your comments and, and, um, conversations as quiet as possible, it, the microphones do pick up what the audience is saying, and it's hard for our online listeners to hear. So I just ask that you be uh, as respectful as possible, so that all that are watching and listening. Um, and welcome to those online as well. I forgot to say that earlier. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, be respectful so that everyone can hear the meeting, whether here or, um, watching online. So thank you so much. If there is anyone that has a comment on an item not on the agenda this evening, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Okay, um, for our online audience, if you wish to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, you can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or the, uh, star nine on your phone, if you're on your phone. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on non-agenda items. And we will go into our first item of Old Business, which is the second reading of ordinance 1507 related to short-term rentals. And, um, as I said before, um, I understand that many people are here in the room regarding, um, ordinance 1507 related to short-term rentals. Um, and as mentioned, the public hearing was closed last, uh, council meeting on February 13th. And so there will be no testimony accepted on ordinance 1507 this evening. Um, the council will be conducting open deliberations on this matter, and we ask for your patience and decorum while this takes place. So I will turn it over to our Community Development Director Carl DeCemus for his report this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, good evening, council and members of the public. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, uh, before you, this evening is, uh, ordinance 1507, as the mayor stated, relative to, uh, short-term rental regulations. Um, this is the second reading of that ordinance. If you'll recall, we, um, had a public, held a public hearing on February 13th. Her testimony from the public, um, there was, uh, deliberations and question and answer from council. Um, and a very good discussion. So we've brought it back to you, um, this evening for second reading, and I just wanted to note just a few items if I could. Uh, I'll be relatively brief, but two things in the, in the ordinance, uh, in section one, uh, we, uh, added, uh, we're, we've added section one to repeal ordinance 1497, which is the moratorium on lodging level one permit applications. Um, so if this ordinance is adopted tonight, it would, um, then automatically repeal that, um, moratorium on lodging level one. Uh, another slight change is in section eight, uh, which would amend, section eight amends the Gig Harbor Municipal Code to include a new code section, which is 1785, which would be relative to short-term rentals. Um, and we, uh, included a minor edit for clarity. Uh, so this is page eight of 18, uh, in your packet, uh, 17, subsection 1785, oh, three, oh, subsection A3B. Uh, we amended to remove owner as a specific entity that would need to hold the business license in order to maintain the permit. Since the property owner does not need to be the permittee, this criterion, uh, was erroneous. So with this change, the subsection is now less ambiguous. So just a, a minor minor detail. Um, a couple of follow-up items, uh, that the council had asked staff to research, uh, at the February 13th, um, hearing. Uh, the first was, uh, a, a consideration of whether or not this ordinance could, uh, restrict, could, could include a restriction relative to LLCs and corporations. Um, the city researched this topic and did not find any way of restricting short-term rental permits based on someone's affiliation with a corporate entity or to limit permits for corporate entities only. Uh, the city's regulatory authority falls within the realm of land use controls and development regulations. So these restrictions should focus on zoning limitations on the use of land. By including limitations on corporations or their affiliates, the city would stray from land use and development codes, which are germane to this ordinance, ordinance 1507, and delve into regulating the structure of the business itself. Um, the second item, um, council asked us to do some research on, uh, was, uh, the question of will the city require transportation and utility studies as part of? the question of will the city require transportation and utility studies as part of a short-term rental application? This concept is also known as concurrency management, which we apply to most land uses and developments throughout the city. The idea that being that development does sometimes create long-term impacts on city infrastructure. For now, Public Works' proposed policy regarding concurrency for short-term rentals located in existing approved residential units, including accessory dwelling units, is to process short-term rentals as an accessory use to an already established residential use. Because the concurrency management code would have already been applied to the residential use of the site, therefore, no additional analysis is necessary at this time.
Can you ask you to move your mic just a little?
Am I too far away?
I think so.
I'm sorry.
Are you having trouble hearing him? Yeah, I I'm having trouble hearing. No, you don't have to. As long as council, council heard what you were saying. Okay, it's a little quiet. No, I should have said something sooner.
So I just to reiterate then, so therefore, at this time, the city's policy would be that we would not, we would not apply concurrency management for short-term rental permits. Just a couple of other items that I want to note. One is that we've heard a little bit of, we've got a lot of comments from the public, and thank you for those comments. We appreciate it, and we, we look through them all, we read them, and the public process is alive and well in Gig Harbor, which is great. One thing that we heard was sort of a comparison to, compare, a comparison of short-term rentals to hotels in some way. And I just wanted to make the, the distinction here that, and for clarity's sake, note that this ordinance would, would create that clear distinction between hotels. It's one of the, the points of this ordinance, actually. Hotels in, in the city of Gig Harbor are defined under lodging level three. So we have lodging level one, two, and three. Lodging level three being applied to or defined, defining hotels. Lodging level three, as currently defined in, in Gig Harbor Municipal Code, is an establishment providing sleeping accommodations with a majority of all guest rooms having direct access through the main lobby of the building, with or without food services, and may include conference facilities. The short-term rental definition, as we currently have it drafted, is a, and this is just a, the, the first part of this definition, is a, is, is in a legally established dwelling unit, accessory apartment, or a portion thereof. So the distinction here is that a short-term rental is in a dwelling unit, while a hotel or a lodging level three is an establishment with a main lobby and guest rooms. So definitely a clear distinction there that I wanted to draw between the two. And lastly, I just wanted to emphasize how many public meetings, how many public meetings have been held on this topic, and I draw your attention to the, to the big screen here. We, we threw together a table that shows all of the public meetings that we've, we've held on this topic over the past year and a half or so. Going all the way back to September 7th, 2021, when the Planning and Building Committee first had their discussions about short-term rentals. You'll see in the form of column there, all of the opportunities that the public had to come and provide testimony at each of those meetings throughout. I would note that, of course, the, the, the ordinance that we're currently looking at tonight, and that you looked at on February 13th, was not necessarily the same ordinance that was looked at all the way across this table, but the, but the topic was the same. And so the, the input provided at those meetings, what we were studying, and what we were looking at was all relative to short-term rentals and various iterations of codes relative to those. So, I just wanted to call the council's attention to the, sort of, the record and what we've, what we've been doing over the past year and a half or so. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much. So these are clarifying questions from council. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. So, I have a couple of questions, clarifying questions. On, with the topic of concurrency management, or probably in plain words, you know, having to do, having to perform, say, traffic studies or water sewer impact studies. Could you give some easy to understand examples of cases where they might be needed or not be needed, something like, you know, a couple is renting out their STR, a room in their, in their home, would they require that? Or somebody's got an entire house, they're going to be renting out four rooms. So, as you had some pretty exacting terminology there, but I think some of it might even gone over my head, too. So just some easy examples, if you would, just so we understand.
So, are you asking, you're asking for examples of each where we might apply concurrency and where we might not, or?
Yeah, actually, you know, a little of both. Again, let's just say, for example, you're coming in, you're getting a permit for a an STR in home, a, a single room, would somebody have to go through a, a traffic study? Or you're, you're renting out your entire house as an STR, and it's got five bedrooms, would they need a traffic study or water sewer impacts?
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. I understand. And so the answer is fairly short. At this time, the city's policy would be that we would not apply concurrency management. Therefore, we would not require a traffic study or, or a a report relative to utilities. So sewer, water, unless that dwelling unit was not previously established. So if it was, if it were legally established, then the, the idea being that because the dwelling unit has already been legally established, it's already gone through those studies. We've already looked at traffic relative to that single, to that dwelling unit. We've already looked at sewer and water relative to the, to the residential use of the site.
Okay, so basically, being already established means the house has already been built?
Correct, it's already been, it's already received a certi- certificate of occupancy. It's, it's gone through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Book?
Yes, thank you. And Director DeCimas, thank you for that presentation. How many short-term rentals are, would be allowed on any residential block in the city of Gig Harbor?
There is no limitation on the number that could be established on any block in the city of Gig Harbor under this current ordinance.
Right, so unlimited number there. How many LLC or corporation owners can own a short-term rental under this proposed ordinance? So if an LLC or corporation had five members, how many short-term rentals could they have?
It's, it's, the potential is that each of them could own a short-term rental.
So each member of a corporation or, or an LLC could open, could, could operate a short-term rental in Gig Harbor?
Potentially.
Okay. Are there any requirements for anyone to live in any of these short-term rentals?
No, there would be no requirement for owner occupancy.
Okay. And the owners, people who buy these homes, can they do the paperwork online? To buy their house and to establish, to do the permit for a short terminal? Can this paperwork be done online?
Are you referring to an electronic submittal or an electronic submittal for a, for a permit application?
Yes.
We do accept electronic permit application submissions. Yes.
Is there any regulation that requires investors or corporations to be in Gig Harbor?
Not, not to be in Gig Harbor per se. Of course, there is a, there is an owner of the property, so technically, they are a member of the community, in that sense.
But they don't have to ever set foot in Gig Harbor. They can own a house and not ever come here, right?
That is very true.
Thank you. Director DeCimas?
Councilmember Book, there are other hands raised, so I think I may move on, and I'll come back to you. Okay, Councilmember Lickens?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So, Director DeCimas, I've gotten a lot of questions from folks in North Gig Harbor, specifically in the neighborhood of Harbor Hill, concerned that their CCNRs specifically limit or prohibit short-term rentals. And if this ordinance should pass, would this change Harbor Hill's CCNRs to allow short-term rentals in those neighborhoods?
Thank you, Councilmember Lickens. It would not.
Okay, so the proposed ordinance doesn't prohibit in any way neighborhood homeowners associations from placing more strict limits on short-term rentals in their neighborhoods?
That is correct.
Okay. And do you know of, is there, and possibly Daniel can speak to this, is there a legal process if neighbors who do not live in a short-term or in a a neighborhood that has a neighborhood association and CCNRs, is there a legal process that they could form their own neighborhoods?
I, I am not aware of that. I know that there was an article that was provided.
Is your microphone off?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Um, yeah, just.
Real close, sorry. I'm not aware of process to do that. You would need to have everybody on board with that. And so, if you were to have everybody on board, you might be able to do that. But again, I've not run into that path forward, and that would be a private matter between those property owners.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. Thank you. That's all for you. Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Director DeCimas, sorry for all the questions, but gotta get this out. I know that I've read all of the many emails that have come in on all various sides of this topic, and one general theme that seems to be coming through is just allowing STRs in our commercial and business areas only zoned as commercial business. Hypothetically, if that were to happen, do you have an idea, I guess, how many available residences would be able to be come STRs? That is to say, in our commercial areas, how many homes are there that could be turning to STRs? And I guess what I'm getting at is if the council were to say, let's amend this and just put STRs in commercial business areas, and yet there's no houses that exist in those areas, this would be a de facto ban. That's what I'm trying to get at. If there's plenty of houses in the resident, in the business commercial areas, who knows, that might be something we could look at. But I was wondering if we had kind of taken a glance at that.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Henderson. I don't have that number off the top of my head. We're looking into it here. If you could give us just a, a minute or two, we'll, we'll see if we can dig up that number. I would say the number would be relatively small in our commercial areas, as far as residential dwelling units go. That will include the downtown business district, however. And we do have some apartment buildings and condos in some of our B2 zones. So there are, there, there would be a handful, but it certainly would pale in comparison to our residential zones.
Okay, thank you.
While you're looking for that, I'll go back to Councilmember Book.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the first time, I'm trying to remember the first time I saw this specific draft ordinance. And I think it was put out to the public, was it February the first, or was it February the second? Does, does maybe the city clerk have that information for this specific draft?
I believe the notice of the hearing included the first draft of the ordinance, and I think that was Thursday, February 2nd. Without a calendar in front of me, whatever the Thursday was.
That's correct, February 2nd.
So that's the first day that council and also our citizens had an opportunity to see this draft. Is that correct?
In its completed form, yes.
And so then you see this draft on the second. Then when was the first time that our citizens had the opportunity to speak to this specific draft?
February 13th, at the council hearing.
Thank you. I have a question, I think, for Mr. Kenny. We've been talking about this. The city of New Jersey created an ordinance where owners were limited to 60 nights of short-term rentals each, and long-term renters were barred from subletting their properties on the short-term rental market. That's what that city of Jersey is about, is that correct?
There, there was a Third Circuit decision that was issued over the summer. I have not analyzed the municipal code for the city involved.
Right. So the city of New Jersey, the city of Jersey City was sued, and they prevailed in court, and their ordinance stood with the Third Circuit. Is that, that's what we're talking about here?
That, the, the issues that were brought to the Third Circuit, yes, that proceeded, yes.
Thank you. Are you aware of a statement by Reuters Practical Law? I think I sent this to you earlier today, and the statement says, "The Third Circuit's decision to uphold Jersey City's ordinance shows that the court is willing to give deference to municipalities trying to balance the competing interests between investors seeking to maximize STR profit and residents seeking to protect their quality of life in their communities." Is, did I read that correctly?
I, I don't have that in front of me, but the court in that situation is the Third Circuit. The Third Circuit is not our circuit. We are in the Ninth Circuit, and so that would be not binding authority that could be persuasive, depending on the facts of our case compared to the facts of their case.
Right. So should the council decide or direct staff, is it possible that the planning commission or staff could come up with some sort of compromise with short-term rentals and neighborhoods? If we sort of tried to follow or, or you're hooked on to what the city of Jersey City did or connected there, even though that was the Third Circuit, could we not say this has been okay in the Third Circuit, and we might have some hope for getting, for reducing our legal risk in the Ninth Circuit?
I think that the example or the adopted regulations in that city could be used as a, an example to guide conversations, and the court decision could be used as a guide to analysis of risk. And I think that there are many, many ways to approach this topic that would be legally sound. And it would appear that in the Third Circuit, theirs was one option.
Thank you very much. So it sounds like that maybe if we directed Planning Commission, they could perhaps come up with something that would be legal, legally sound.
I, I would make sure of it.
Yes. Thank you. I intend to make a motion, Madam Mayor. Would you like me to hold on to that until we're in deliberation?
I guess, please, I have other lights on.
And, and that's fine. So shall I leave my light on for that, or should I, you put me on the list or whatever?
Um, you can leave your light on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Lickens?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to repeat a question that I asked at, just prior to the public hearing at our last meeting. I asked a question about whether there had not, had been any complaints registered, for example, with the police on any short-term rentals within the city.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Lickens. To my knowledge, there have been none, although I heard that there, I just recently heard that there may have been one in 2021, but I didn't have that expanded.
That was upheld, do you know?
It was a, it was a noise complaint, and as I understand it, there was a, there was a party at the house, but it wasn't the, the police showed up and it was put, put to rest fairly quickly, so.
Okay, and then just a, a second question and clarification, because there was some comment about some, some different issues made at the public hearing. Has anyone that's ever stayed in a short-term rental in the city of Gig Harbor committed any crimes?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I was listening to a couple of the comments about limitations and things and having court cases and stuff, and I'm wondering if we can, I can call an executive session to talk about potential legal issues for us.
Yes, you certainly may. So in the event then, that an executive session was needed, I, we, I'm going to read the following. We will now go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss potential litigation per RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero parentheses one parentheses I. Action may be taken following the executive session. Councilor Rodenberg, if you would like to log off this meeting, please, and join the link that was sent to you, and then council, we will go to community rooms AB.
The executive session is extended for an additional 10 minutes until 6:41 PM. The executive session is extended for an additional five minutes until 6:46 PM.
Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, February 27th, 2023. The time is 6:47 PM. We have returned from executive session. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, could I, could I ask for a five-minute break, please?
Yes, so we will adjourn until 6:52.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, February 27th. The time is 6:51 PM. I wanted to clarify, so I have recently learned we have to come straight back in from, from executive session into council chambers without going anywhere else, and so that's why, I apologize for the awkwardness, but that's why we had to come in here, reconvene the meeting, and then call a recess. So just so you all know, that's the procedure that will happen from now on, if that happens again. So that's why we had the back-to-back breaks there. Okay, so we are still on old business item number one, the second reading of ordinance 1507 related to short-term rentals, and we are in clarifying questions from council, and we, I left off with Councilmember Look. Your light is on.
You suggested I leave it on for deliberation?
Oh, for deliberation, yes. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. So much has happened since then. Councilmember Liggins. Oh, okay, so, um, so are we, are there no other clarifying questions from council then?
Mayor, if I could, just, I just had a quick follow-up to Councilmember Henderson's question earlier. We did a little look into the number of residential units in, in commercial areas versus versus residential levels. We're unable to come up with that number conclusively here tonight, but it would take further digging and potentially some discussions with Pierce County to get to it. But again, I would reiterate that obviously there are far more residences in residential zones than there would be in our commercial zones, and I would, would venture a guess that our commercial zones do not contain very many residential dwelling units.
Okay, thank you very much, Carl. Okay, so I don't see any other lights on, and as I mentioned before, no public comment will be accepted on this agenda item due to the public hearing closing on February 13th. So now I will move to council deliberation and action. So Councilmember Look.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh. Can someone reach out to Councilman Rodenberg to see if he needs the link again?
He's back in the meeting. He just doesn't have it.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. I didn't see as of, you can, you don't have to have your camera on, Lee. I just wanted to make sure you were, you were with us. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Look, and then I'm.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance this evening proposes that short-term rentals are, have, also are available with absentee landlords, and this is a huge problem throughout the United States. On February the 24th, there was an NBC News analysis that stated the share of homes sold to absentee landlords, people in the market for properties that won't be their primary residence, has increased since 2020 from Seattle to Charlotte, North Carolina. Also quoted in that is absentee owners are not as concerned about the home, what the home looks like if they're not living in it, said Tiffany Graham, a Realtor with Keller Williams River Cities in Columbus, Georgia. "We are working hard in this city right now to try to figure out what our housing availability is because we're going to need to add some affordable housing, and so for us to take housing off the market when we need, when we don't know how many houses we have and what we're going to need for available affordable housing is, is a concern, should concern everybody." There are two ladies in favor of short-term rentals, and they submitted a petition today. While not all 50 states are listed in this petition, there are names on this petition from California, Florida, Arizona, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Oregon, New York, North Carolina, Alaska, Idaho, Missouri, Nebraska, Illinois, Colorado, Indiana, South Carolina, Mexico, Maryland, Washington State, and even Gig Harbor. There is a very, very glaring omission from this petition supporting short-term rentals that makes it worthless. You will not find on this petition one Gig Harbor street address. There are no addresses on this petition that claim to support short-term rentals, not one, and we all know that Gig Harbor address without a street name and a number does not mean in the city limits. On this petition, you will not find one address of a Gig Harbor citizen that could be impacted by this ordinance. In stark contrast to that ordinance, the council has received email after email from our citizens proud to list their address, living in neighborhoods that could be impacted by this ordinance. The Citizen Coalition petition with over 250 names has address after address of Gig Harbor citizens living in neighborhoods that could be impacted by this ordinance, and they don't want these short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, and they do believe that we need to find a way to allow them and also figure out how to protect neighborhoods with them. On January the 24th, the Chamber of Commerce asked Gig Harbor businesses to write to council supporting the passage of this ordinance. Four. Four is the number of businesses that sent emails to council supporting this ordinance. The silence of our small businesses to support this ordinance is deafening and should be a wake-up call for everyone. Gig Harbor residents don't want this ordinance. Gig Harbor businesses don't want this ordinance. We need to take some time and figure out what our housing stock is and what we need to do for affordable housing. So tonight I moved to direct staff to schedule a special meeting for the purpose of extending the moratorium to send back to planning commission.
Is there a second?
All right, so I have another motion. I moved to direct staff to schedule a special meeting for the purpose of extending this moratorium and bringing back an ordinance to allow short-term rentals in the commercial and business zone and not allowing them in the residential zones.
Is there a second?
I have another one. If you live in a housing development that is governed by homeowners association, as a resident of that development, you have the right to vote whether or not you want short-term rentals in your neighborhoods. Those citizens in those neighborhoods voted by their CCNRs not to have short-term rentals in their neighborhood. If you do not live in an area that has a homeowners association, you have no right to vote. Whether you want short-term rentals should be allowed in your neighborhood or not. You have no right to vote, except the city council can give you the right to cast your advisory vote on short-term rentals in Gig Harbor. City council can give all city residents in Gig Harbor the ability to vote on whether or not you want to see short-term rentals in your neighborhood. This would be an advisory vote, non-binding. It would take away any questions about whether or not our Gig Harbor voters want to see short-term rentals in your neighborhoods. So I move to direct staff to extend the moratorium to allow an August primary election, citizen advisory vote on whether or not Gig Harbor citizens want short-term rentals in their residential neighborhoods.
Is there a second? Okay. Hearing none, I will move on to Councilmember Liggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's been a week or a few weeks, hasn't it? So first of all, I want to again thank staff for your professional, hard work on drafting this ordinance before us after listening to council's input on this issue. I also want to reach out and thank the planning commission, who spent many, many months studying and attempting to draft fair and reasonable regulations for short-term rentals. I watched every single one of those meetings. I read every single letter that was received. Your service and dedication of the commissioners is greatly appreciated. I also want to thank those who took the time to speak before council at the public hearing or to provide your comments to us on the email and also at the public hearing. Your time and engagement are appreciated. I personally have spoken at meetings before. I know the courage it takes to reach out, to stand up and to speak, and I appreciate your courage and commitment. This is a complex issue, and over this last week, this issue has taken a honestly remarkably divisive tone in our community. Gig Harbor prides itself in being a friendly community where people walk by and say hello, where neighbors help neighbors. Speaking candidly, some of the recent discourse and vitriol has been frankly, in letters we have received, and particularly the last week, shock, both shocking and disappointing. I believe Gig Harbor is better than this. There are many sides to this issue, and for sure, it is complex, but I am concerned with the lack of civility for one another in our community. I believe we're above this discourse, and I believe we can civilly disagree on issues without being disagreeable. First, I want to address a few common questions that were received on the mayor and council email, and I'm going to go through them individually. Is council passing this because they will personally make money off of short-term rentals? I do not have any personal interest in a short-term rental, and there are legal duties in my offices to recuse or abstain from a vote if I should be at any conflict or personal benefit. Another question we received, is council doing this because they are fearful of a lawsuit? When I was sworn into office, I took an oath to follow the laws of Washington State and the Constitution. When we put forth legislation, we evaluate it with our expert assistance of our city attorney, who to ensure that it is legally sound. Having legislations or actions that could put the city at risk of legal liability would be irresponsible of council and of me. Lawsuits are costly to city budgets. We can't always prevent them, but taking potentially upwards of hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars away to pay for lawsuits are taken away from funding the essential services that so many people ask for, such as crosswalks or money to hire additional police officers. There is a fiduciary responsibility I take very seriously to be mindful of taxpayer dollars and to create legally sound ordinances and resolutions with the guidance of our city attorney. Here's another question. Aren't these regulations being rushed through? As shown by the data earlier today, this process has been extensively studied over the last 18 minutes, months by staff, planning commission for over a year, and now council. Best practices, including the National League of Cities document on short-term rental guidance for cities, several public hearings have been conducted and looked at and offered opportunities for input. Is there a way for us as a city to improve communication? Absolutely. And we will continue to look at ways to remain engaged with our community, and I will be bringing this forward to our upcoming council retreat of how we can better communicate with our residents. Another question, and I appreciate your patience. Have short-term rentals brought crime to our city? And you heard our community development director, DeCemus, answer that question earlier today. Are corporations reaching out to buy up the city? From my understanding, the city has no known record of corporations reaching out to buy up short-term rentals in our city. Could this be an issue that requires monitoring in the future? Absolutely. And I am going to suggest addressing this at the end of my comments. Are short-term rentals making housing unaffordable in Gig Harbor? Just for the record, we have approximately less than half of 1% of known short-term rentals that we're aware of in the city. Affordable housing is a very complex, complex issue involving multiple forces that affect supply and demand. This can be affected by many factors, including second vacation homes that are often left empty, which in those articles that have been shared with us from places like, like Tahoe and different ski resorts and Sonoma, there are large numbers of homes sitting vacant, not short-term rentals, but sitting vacant as second homes, and that is affecting affordability. Lack of housing supply to keep up with, with demand is an issue that is felt locally and regionally as well as nationally. Last week, I attended the Association of Washington Cities meeting in Olympia last week, along with several council members and the mayor. And hot topic as we sat and conversed with the governor and our state legislators from cities and city council members and mayors from all over the state was housing affordability and available, and affordability. It was a hot topic, so to speak. Should short-term monitors, should short-term rentals be monitored to look at the effects, effects of affordability and availability? Again, absolutely, and I encourage close monitoring and potential limitations and looking at ideas such as, do we look at overall percentages or even by neighborhood precinct data? We could consider such things. This is an issue that will require ongoing close monitoring and possibly limitation. This issue is being addressed by the city, and we have at, as we speak, a housing affordability study that we are awaiting the results from, from our consultants just within the upcoming months, and it could give us more information to help guide our policies. The city additionally has placed over $400,000 into our budget later this year to overall do a comprehensive plan update, and housing, including short-term rentals, will be analyzed with robust community outreach. Will short-term rentals bring transients and other negative impacts for those who don't care about our city? First of all, I'd like to remind, anytime we travel, including when we go to a nice beach or to Paris, we ourselves are transients. I have heard and met personally with people in our community who stayed in short-term rentals between housing moves. I've met with nurses who've worked contracts at our local hospitals. I even met with a family member with a disability who needed the privacy space in a kitchen to accommodate family needs while traveling. Per my knowledge of what has been presented to us to date, the short-term rentals that the city is aware of, based on their research, are almost exclusively owned by Gig Harbor area residents, and many staying at our local short-term rentals are residents themselves or family members. So let's keep this in mind when we're talking about our very neighbors who own many of these houses.
Councilwoman Liggins, I'm sorry, there is another light on. I just want to make sure.
I'll, I'll, if Councilmember Barber wants to speak.
Would you like to speak now, or would you like, Curtis? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Thank you for your patience. There was a lot of letters that came in this last week. Do short-term rentals pay lodging, lodging taxes? From my understanding, short-term renters are required to be licensed and pay lodging taxes. These lodging taxes we use with our LTAC committee to fund city celebrations, festivals, and to support our local nonprofit community. Could we place a limit on the few, in, in the future or near future on the total percentage of short-term rentals within our city limits? Personally, I believe this is reasonable, and council could pause and if there are thresholds that are met with concern. Should we place a limit within certain neighborhoods? I think it's reasonable to consider placing limits and numbers in, with closer monitoring based on the data that we receive. Can we put a moratorium on new applications if we find that the number of short-term rentals is growing at an alarming rate? From my understanding, we can put a, a stop and a hold on any new applications. Can we improve our permitting process and experience for our community members? Yes, and this is being suggested as a topic for our upcoming retreat. And in addition to these, I have a few questions of my own. Is Gig Harbor a friendly city? Is this a place where we welcome tourists? Have you or your community action, your, or actions within your Have you or your community action, or actions within your community shown that Gig Harbor is a place where neighbor cares for your neighbors, even those with whom you disagree? Is Gig Harbor a welcoming city? When I ran for office, I met many people while canvassing. I heard from so many that in these divisive times, what people want is respectful civil discourse and leadership. I do not see this ordinance as perfect or a static document, but a dynamic working document that is a beginning, and it allows us to move forward and allow responsible neighbors and businesses, some of whom are your neighbors, your friends, and even your family in our community, to be permitted and licensed and to monitor more precisely location, tax collections, and allow the city to conduct code enforcement if there are those that are falling without, outside the bounds. It also adds a good neighbor code that allows for responsible and safe expectations of lodging and visitors and the ability to monitor location and numbers and the possible effects on our city housing supply and affordability. I therefore would like to direct staff, if this ordinance should pass, to bring forth a proposed contract from a planning consultant firm to look at our overall numbers and give monthly reports to council and to inform council should certain concerning thresholds be met, such as the percentage of total households. And to those who have been commenting and engaged in this issue, I encourage you to take your hand and reach over and say hello and try to listen to each other's perspectives respectfully. People desire this in our community. As we, are we being the best neighbors, friends, and even relatives that we can be? Are we trying to hear one another's perspectives? Is Gig Harbor a place where neighbors help neighbors? And as I looked at a button across the way recently, does kindness matter? I appreciate your time, and I will therefore be supporting this ordinance this evening. And I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 1507.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rothenberg. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some of my comments echo what Councilmember Lichens just said, but I'm going to reiterate them because I think they're extremely important comments. I am saving my discussion about the discourse over the past several weeks for council, for council comments at the end of the meeting. But I want to thank all of those who have written to express their concerns about and support for short-term rentals over the past eighteen months. We have heard from hundreds of people during this time period. And I especially want to thank the city's staff and the planning commission who have dedicated more than a year to this issue. Our staff, the planning commission, and council have read, discussed, and analyzed more approaches to short-term rentals during the past eighteen months than you can imagine. We've studied existing ordinances in numerous cities and legal cases in additional ones. I've not been involved in a project with this many varied options and solutions for several years, and it's been very interesting. This project, like almost all city projects, had public hearings last spring that were included in public notices. Some who've written recently don't seem to be aware of the lengthy and detailed process that's occurred, and I regret that. After all this analysis and discussion, we are here tonight to make a decision on ordinance 1507. For me, projects like this come down to understanding the problem we are trying to solve and then figuring out the solutions to that problem. In this case, we don't know if we have a problem. We do know there's a lot of fear out there and even more rumors. We also know that the current short-term rental owners are responsible people deeply committed to our community. Most of them live and work here. They include seniors on fixed incomes who rent so they can stay in their home and in the community they've enjoyed for many decades. They rent their homes to people who include those visiting for the first time, those moving here or renovating a home, or to families who are here for a wedding or family reunion, or to traveling nurses helping in our healthcare system. And there are even more that I could, the list could go on for longer than Councilmember Lichens spoke. No. Sorry, I just had to, I couldn't help it. They're committed to maintaining our community. They are our friends, and they are our neighbors. I am also concerned about the potential for too many short-term rentals in our community. I think we all are. And that's why I asked staff, as Councilmember Lichens did, to provide us with the number of applications each month so we can monitor the situation and address it as quickly as possible if the numbers get out of hand. I also direct staff, again, as Councilmember Lichens did, this is what happens when you don't go first, to hire a consultant so that we can get more data and possibly the consultant will provide us a different, longer-term solution than we have discovered today. In short, I support continued study of this issue, probably for many years. But we must move forward and allow our current operators a way to be whole while also maintaining the vibrant community we all love. And that's why I am voting yes on 1507.
Thank you. Before I move on, any direction coming from council, does this need to happen officially and after adoption of the first motion or vote on the first motion? Or is this, were these part of comments and then those can, like official direction can come after the vote?
The official motion, I believe, was to approve the ordinance.
Yes.
And so there would need to be an amendment then to add in the other components that are being asked of staff.
Okay. So I will go ahead and have other council member comments, and then any direction that is formal we need to do after we vote on the original motion. Is that okay? Or do we need to vote right now? Okay. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo Councilmember Lichens and Barber's comments. I too have been very distressed with the discourse over the last few weeks, especially the many accusations of city council members somehow financially gaining from owning STRs. I find that insulting, at least. We've been discussing this issue for eighteen months. The moratorium has been extended twice. We are still working from anecdotal data, hearsays, fear, or stories. These anecdotal data are of little use to make an informed decision, which is what we have to make here for the best of the city. I do believe that we must get something on the books now. I'd also like to echo the direction to staff to hire consultants so we can find out the number of applications per month, locations of these permit applications. And most importantly, to answer one question is what type of housing stock is being lost, if any, by conversion from either a residential, long-term rental to short-term rental or straight somebody coming in and buying a new house and turning it to a short-term rental? I think these data, along with other data, will help us come to a good, informed decision. I believe the engaging a professional consultant to, again, engage the community to get additional data so we have something we can move forward with. And lastly, I'd like us to develop a more robust and easy-to-follow permitting process as well. Make it as simple, which is why I like to ask clarifying questions of our staff here when it sounds like something's getting a little too complicated. Technically correct, but even as an engineer, sometimes it's like, what the heck is he talking about? So I, the, I know that we've mentioned this before about maybe setting up a trigger point of perhaps too many or some percent of applications coming in, then would be, we would gather around the council again to then take action if action needs to be taken. So with that, I'd like to show my support for passing resolution 1507. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. I am reminded of pharmaceutical companies. When they have a new drug on the market, they don't put it out to everyone and wait to see who lives or dies. They start off with a small group first. I'm not going to support this because we're putting it out there to find out what areas and what part is going to be impacted the most. Neighbors helping neighbors, that's what we hear, and that's what we've heard from all of these emails, that neighbors want to have a neighbor to help and to be with and, and.
Point of order. All of.
State your point.
All of the emails we received did not want to or were not negative against STRs.
Okay, sorry.
Point taken.
The vast majority of emails that we received were not in favor of short-term rentals. And over the eighteen months, those emails that were received had no local addresses from neighborhoods, from people living in neighborhoods who were going to be affected by this. So let's see, I think.
Point of order.
Okay, state your point.
Those, the emails that were received did include local email addresses from supporters of short-term rentals. There were also people who had stayed in short-term rentals from outside the community.
Thank you.
Point taken.
So, so the vast majority of emails that we received were not from people who live in residential neighborhoods that are going to be affected by this throughout the whole eighteen months. We know what's happened here. And so the neighbors helping neighbors are exactly what we want. That's what our neighbors have said, that they want to have a neighbor. They want to, this is a residential area because it's zoned residentially because, because they're residents. They're not, they're not short-term rentals, and that's what they want. I have spoken with several different short-term rental companies that monitor short-term rentals. We have five permitted short-term rentals in the city of Gig Harbor today. Everyone else who's operating one is illegal. The short-term rental companies that I've spoken with, Granicus, and there's another one, Government O, I believe is the name. They both identified sixty-three short-term rentals that are advertising on VRBO and Airbnb. They do not include hotels. They do, they, I believe they do include some boats, but these are sixty-three that we are identifying. And quite frankly, you know, I'm really concerned about downtown because that's our preciousness, is downtown. That's why tourists come to Gig Harbor, to see a quaint, charming downtown, not a downtown full of empty houses during the wintertime. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. I see no other lights on and no hands raised, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to provide some further clarification regarding the motions that are on, the motion that's on the table. There's two options moving forward with this particular motion. Councilmember Lichens could amend her motion to include the direction to city staff. And then that would, then Councilmember Rothenberg would need to either retain his second or not. So that's one option. Or we could continue, you could continue down this path and have it be two separate motions. One, dealing with the ordinance, and the second providing direction to staff, whichever is best for council.
Okay.
Councilmember Lichens.
So I will then make, can I amend my motion now? Then, okay. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to direct staff to work with a consultant to study this issue further and to provide regular updates to council. Would you like me to include certain numbers? No, okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I don't support the amendment to have it part of this ordinance. I think the ordinance should stand alone, so I withdraw my motion and my second.
Okay. Is there a second of the?
I second the motion with the amendment.
Councilmember Barber seconds the motion with the amendment. Councilmember Martin, did you have a question or a comment?
I do have a question. So with the consultant, which I'm all in favor of, and I think it makes the best sense in taking a look at this and taking a look at numbers, and if there's a way in which that we can put limitations on the amount of short-term rentals. Any guesstimate, I'm not going to hold you to it, on how soon we could get a consultant and when we could get that study? Just ballpark, and I know it's a ballpark, I get it.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Well, we could begin working on finding a consultant as soon as possible. We'd likely need to go to an RFQ to request consultant support. So I would say at best, probably two months would be a good, a good guess.
To get on board, and then they would take some time to be able to conduct the work that needs to be done, depending on the statement of work that's required.
Correct, and I couldn't speak to how long it would take them to do the work. We really need to, we'd have to hear their proposals first before we could really know that for sure.
And I'm wondering if with this work and knowing that how important this topic is to everyone here in Gig Harbor, is it something that we could put in and ask for status reports so we are making sure that we are as transparent, not to suggest you wouldn't, but as transparent as we can and making sure that we communicate well to all the residents of Gig Harbor through this process?
Absolutely, Councilmember Martin, we would dedicate ourselves to that.
Councilmember Martin, I, the, the, what Carl said is correct. It depends on the dollar threshold if we would need to come back to council for budget authorization. And so that could take some additional time, but if council directed, if the majority of council directs that, then staff will work in haste to get this going as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And just one more question, wanted to make sure that we can actually have data presented on our website so that all residents, all the public can see each month, and I'm not putting a date out there, but each month that we can put out how many applications we're getting, how many applications that have been approved, how many applications are pending, et cetera, do monthly, yearly totals, is that something that we can get done, right?
Absolutely, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve ordinance 1507 with direction to staff to hire consultant and provide regular updates. I'm abbreviating that motion, but that's the gist. So if council understands, understands the motion, so we have a motion and a second. So I will call for a roll call vote for this motion. Councilmember Wook?
Nay.
Councilmember Storset?
Aye.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lichens?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Okay, so this motion passes six to one. Are there any other comments from council? And any other questions from staff? Okay. Oh, I see lights on. Councilmember Henderson.
I know that we've had quite a few discussions from us about suggested things, so maybe later on this week, when you get some time, just come up with what you heard from us trying to direct council staff tonight, what things you might want to be putting in this consultancy work and things that we're going to be doing. Just because I believe Councilmember Barber said some things, I said some, added some things, and I know Councilmember Lichens added some things as well, so just so we're all on the same page.
Yes, we can, we can briefly discuss this potentially on Thursday, if not definitely in an email to council. Director DeCemus will be on a much well-deserved vacation. So, but we'll make sure that this is communicated back to council so that we are, ensure that we've received the direction properly.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
To our citizens, thank you so much for being involved. Your voice is valuable. You are important to this community. And while you may be frustrated this evening, I hope you'll take that frustrating. And while you may be frustrated this evening, I hope you'll take that frustrated frustration and be inspired. We have volunteer commissions and we need you because you love this community. So I hope very much that you will apply and look into the volunteer commissions and, and help and be part of this community and, and make, maybe be a part of the city so you can help to make decisions. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your words.
Thank you. Making sure there's no hands raised, no lights. Okay. Thank you so much. We will move on to new business item number one, which is Resolution twelve seventy, amending city fee schedule. And this report will come to us from our city clerk, Josh Stecker. I will give about a minute for the room to clear. Thank you all for being here tonight. Really appreciate you being here and thank you to those online as well. I know, right? I want to be one in Italy. The food's good there. I know. Maybe we could grab the door. Yeah, thank you so much, Kelly. Okay, thank you so much, everyone. So this report on Resolution twelve seventy, amending the city fee schedule will come from our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This is a very straightforward resolution, amending the city's fee schedule. Our fee schedule is adopted, an updated usually every year, usually around June, to include any new fees or changes to fees that staff identifies. We're doing it in February this year because we have just added a new fee with the adoption of ordinance fifteen oh seven, and that is the six hundred and fifty dollar short-term rental permit fee. So that is the only change to this resolution, other than some formatting, just for clarity to other sections of the resolution. The only change is this new fee for six hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, if we, as a result of our study that we've directed staff on the previous ordinance, if the fee changes and they say they want to make it higher, lower, whatever, would there be a great difficulty changing that back?
It's just simply passing a new resolution with amended amount. So at any time, council could direct staff to reevaluate that fee or simply direct us to charge a different fee.
Okay.
Bring forward a new resolution.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights on. I will open up the public comment on this agenda item only. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this agenda item, you can come forward. Okay, anyone in our online audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item? I see a hand raised, first name Richard. And you can press unmute or star six on your phone.
Okay, unmuted.
We can hear you and you will have three minutes to speak, and if you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Moser, forty-six Point Fostic Drive Northwest, Gig Harbor, nine eight three three five.
Thank you.
And I'm just curious, are the, is this application fee supposed, supposed to be based on the actual cost to the city of processing the application?
So we don't answer questions during public comment, but you are more than welcome to email the city clerk to have that question answered unless that's something we can just quickly answer, but I think.
That would be a question for the community development department?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. That's a question for community development department, so.
Then I guess I would just make the comment that that fee seems high to me and it seems like it should be based on the actual cost to process the permit. Just seems like too much money for this particular thing.
Mayor, if I may, since there's still time remaining, I will say that in working with community development, the, the permit fee is directly associated with the amount of time that it takes our staff members to work on this and materials such as notice board, publication and the gateway, et cetera. And so that is the cost that it would, approximately the cost that it would take the city to process the permit from beginning to end.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I guess I wasn't allowed to ask a question, but I understand the answer.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in our online audience wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on this item and move to council deliberation. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. I'll move to approve Resolution twelve seventy, amending the city fee schedule.
I second that.
Mayor, I will note that there is an additional hand raised online.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not, did I see that? Was that before I closed public comment? No? Would council wish to open public comment back up to take this person's comment?
Yes.
Okay, so Jackie Oliver, Olivier, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly.
No, Olivier is correct. I'm on our view drive and I'm not sure, I just joined. If I can speak on the subject or whether it's been passed on short-term rentals. I have sent numerous.
Oh, I'm sorry, this, this agenda item, this public comment period is.
Has closed.
It's from Resolution about the six hundred and fifty dollar permit fee change?
Okay, well, just thank you for having our backs, wish you don't. So downtown. I don't know if you would.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will now close the public comment on this agenda item. We have a motion and a second. I don't see any other lights on. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, council. Okay, we will move on to item number two, Pierce County Conservation Futures Agreement to Reimburse and Stewardship Agreement slash Restrictive Covenants for the Lion's Property. Suggested motion is to move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following Pierce County Conservation Futures documents related to the city's recently acquired lion's property, Agreement to Reimburse and Stewardship Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Lingholm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As you know, the city's been working diligently to, with Pierce County Conservation Futures to fund the majority of the cost of the lion's property purchase. The property purchase was first considered back in two thousand twenty-one with, in concert with the Pualt tribe of Indians. And so the city ended up closing on the property in spring of two thousand twenty-two. And now the city and Pierce County have drafted up the documents and completed all the final items that needed to be completed for these documents to be created. Appraisals and backup information for the appraisals and copies of all the closing documents. So now that we are at this point, the city requested the final agreement documents and Declaration of Covenants from Pierce County. Those have now been provided and this agreement to reimburse the city, once it's approved, the city must also accept the terms of the covenant for the, for the restrictions that are put on the property to put it into conservation. So that's the two documents you have before you tonight. It's pretty much, they go hand in hand. So if authorized tonight, the approved documents would then be provided to Pierce County. And then the city would be awaiting reimbursement of four hundred thirty thousand dollars for that property purchase. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wook, your light was on. Okay, no problem. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Lingham, just a quick clarification, the lion's property, that's what we're calling phase three?
No, I'm sorry, this is North Queake Salmon Heritage Site Phase One.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't see any other lights. So I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. Anyone in our audience tonight wish to speak on this item? Okay, those watching online, if you wish to speak, you can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and I'll open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Barber?
Yes, I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following Pierce County Conservation Futures documents related to the city's recently acquired lion's property. Number one is the agreement to reimburse and number two, the stewardship agreement and declaration of restricted covenants.
I'll second it.
Okay. With a motion and a second, I don't see any other lights. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Moving on to our third item of new business is Resolution twelve seventy-one, expressing the city's support of the Pierce County Village Project and suggested motion is to move to approve Resolution twelve seventy-one. And this report comes to us from our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you again, Mayor, and good evening again, council. This resolution is supporting an initiative that is being undertaken by the Tacoma Rescue Mission, Pierce, Pierce County and several other local agencies. It's an initiative based on the community-first village near Austin, Texas, which is basically a living community that supports permanent housing for chronically homeless. The, the Pierce County Village would have accommodations, living units, support buildings and onsite employment for the people that it services. The project is still kind of in its infancy. It's being explored, it's being developed. But the Tacoma Rescue Mission is reaching out to our federal, federal representatives looking for appropriations and funding. And they've reached out to several of our council members in the city, looking for our support in that. So this resolution will authorize the city to express its support for the project officially, so we can reach out to our, our federal representatives. It also authorizes the mayor and city administrator and council members to reach out on behalf of the city and express our support for the project. I understand that Pierce County Council is still working on the project and the specifics and the particulars. And there's still a lot of work to be done on that, so the resolution is not specific to a site or location or a specific project. But as it's written, it will give us the ability to support whatever Pierce County Council decides to move forward with. And I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will open up public comment for this agenda item only. Anyone in our audience wish to speak on this item tonight? Okay, those watching or listening online, if you'd like to comment on this agenda item, you can raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on this item and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Martin?
I move that the city approves the Resolution twelve seventy-one for expressing the city's support of Pierce County Village Project.
Second.
Was that second by Councilmember Barber? Okay, okay, great. Seeing no other lights, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And our final item of business tonight is first reading and adoption of ordinance fifteen oh nine, amending the city's personnel salary schedule. Suggested motion is to move to approve ordinance fifteen oh nine. And this report comes to us from our Human Resources Director, Shannon Costanti.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, council. And thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening, very briefly on this homestretch related to ordinance fifteen oh nine, amending the city's salary schedule. Noted in your material, and as you may recall, the city currently has a human resources analyst vacancy. As we are preparing to launch our recruiting efforts, staff has determined that it would be ideal to retitle the position to human resources generalist in order to more relevantly and appropriately represent the function of this position in the market. As you'll have seen in your material, this staff request does not have budgetary impact as the pay scale for the position remains unchanged. However, because of the proposed retitling, an update to the city's salary schedule will be needed, which we are seeking council approval for this evening. So that concludes my presentation and I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have related.
Okay, thank you so much. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. Anyone in the audience wish to speak tonight? Okay, our online audience, if you would like to speak, you can press star nine on your phone or raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation.
I move to approve ordinance fifteen oh nine?
I'll second.
Second, I beg Councilmember Lichens. Okay, seeing no other lights. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And we will, I will open it up for council reports and comments. Councilmember Barber?
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, I want to talk up just a moment about how we as a community can come together after tonight's vote on short-term rentals. The past two weeks have frankly brought to light a side of Gig Harbor I don't think anyone wants to see. I'd very much like to bury it again. This is not how neighbors help other neighbors. This is not how our community should behave. When my family moved to Gig Harbor nearly ten years ago, we were told this was a welcoming community. But we haven't always seen that and I especially haven't seen it during the past few weeks. I would ask that we all examine the conversations we've been having, the words we've been using and that we look at ways we can reach out to people we don't know or to people we do know but may not have seen recently. Look at how we can embrace everyone we run into and let's say hello to everyone. Let's ask someone we haven't seen in months for, to coffee. We all need to take stock and find ways we can be more welcoming because none of us is perfect. How can you as an individual help make Gig Harbor a welcoming city? Because together, I believe we can be better and we can be one Gig Harbor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. I attended a Puget Sound Regional Council meeting February the second and also the Pierce County Regional Council meeting on the nineteenth. The Puget Sound Regional Council presented a housing, housing survey. And the results of that survey depart, done by Puget Sound Regional Council and Department of Commerce say that housing costs are a problem statewide, surprising, I think we all know that. Seventy-seven percent say rents are too high. The state needs more housing. Eighty-three percent said more housing, reasonably priced housing is needed in their communities. Housing is hard to find from this survey. Forty-nine percent said it's very difficult to find affordable housing that meets their needs. Seventy-four percent have said, have experienced one or more difficulties in finding housing, affordable housing. People want government, government to do more. Isn't that always the way it is, right? Eighty-two percent. Eighty-two percent of this survey said government agencies should work together to address the need for housing. Sixty-four percent said government agencies should do more to provide housing not being delivered by the market. And eighty percent said that more housing, if done well, is likely to make their community better. So I think we'll probably hear more about this study for housing in the future, but I thought this was really good. A good indication from Puget Sound Regional Council and Department of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lykins?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that I attended the Association of Washington Cities City Action Days in Olympia last week. Mayor Markley was there as well as Councilmember Barber, Councilmember Henderson, and Councilmember Martin. And no, more than three of us did not meet at any one time. That is correct. That is correct. It was really fascinating. We met, Governor Inslee did a fireside chat. We also met with several of the state legislators, and heavy on the mind, again, as Councilmember Wook brought up, is housing. So I think we're going to be hearing a lot about it and the lack of it and how we incorporate it. Gig Harbor has done their share, as has been pointed out, you know, heavily in the last few years. So where this fits in to our city mission is going to be some, I think, interesting and tough conversations in the future. It was also fascinating. I met amazing council members and mayors from across the state. In particular, I was able to have a conversation with the mayor of Darrington where they responded to the Oso landslide. And he shared with me the importance of emergency preparedness. And so I'm thrilled to see us taking action on emergency preparedness, because boy, did he have some stories to tell. As well as I met mayor of Friday Harbor, who being on an island, as he said, he's between two countries, just living on a little island. And he said that they are really facing housing shortages because of second homes. They don't have housing for their workers. And they're actually looking at subsidizing housing for some of their seasonal workers. So these are common issues. The crime legislation was the other hot topic. I know Chief Fucie was down, as well as the mayor speaking with the legislature. So hopefully, some good things to come out of that as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. Just to reiterate a couple points regarding our opportunity to be at AWC Action One, thank you, Councilmember Wook, for letting me pinch hit for you. I appreciated the opportunity. And I wanted to let you know that there was an interesting, a couple interesting things that I attended. One was talking about multifamily tax exemption opportunities, which I see our city administrator shaking her head. There's a huge project that's getting almost completion in the city of CTAC with 600-plus units, which is much larger than I think we would take here at Gig Harbor, but they're very excited about the opportunity to give some rent relief, if you will, to many people in that unit. But city of Burlington, the mayor spoke there, and they were able to use an existing building to house people for up to 90 days who were not housed and had perhaps mental health issues occurring at that time, had substance use disorder issues occurring at that time. They were able to get Skagit County to come in and support it. They reserved four rooms just for law enforcement. When law enforcement said jail might not be the right place, this person shouldn't be released in their own cognizance, but they should be able to find a home that's going to be able to support them. I thought that was wonderful. They are by a transit stop. There's a grocery store there. They did all this for about $600,000. And it was really a community coming together to find out how they could fill a need that was very much needed and have had great successes for it. So I just think those are wonderful stories as we look at community needs out there. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about, we had a conversation, I'm sure there were more than one that day, from Chief Lowe of the city of Redmond. And he had spoke about that they're testing out some new technology there. And they've been able to, with this new technology, actually, I think it's adhere a GIS item onto a vehicle. And then they don't have the pursuit, because so many of the pursuits are not allowed right now. And they're able to track where that vehicle's going. And they've had some wonderful successes about apprehending people that just shouldn't be on the road, that have done some very bad things to to the citizens of city of Redmond. They also talked about that they have a license reader that can be, I'm sure, very difficult to do from a vehicle. And he should be getting, his grant runs out the end of this June 30th, and so they'll have a report out, and we'll see if the if the state's going to be funding that, and if that technology would make sense to have broader expansion. So just one more thing to take a look at police pursuits. I just thought it was very well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yes, today I attended the committee that I was appointed to studying feasibility for permanent home for seniors. It was held at Artindale School. And there was a great cross-section of our community there, business owners, members of the YMCA administration. And we studied, it was the initial meeting, we kind of laid out what our goals would be. Marketing, what we'd like to see in a senior center. We looked at a couple pieces of property that are the number one and two leading contenders for location. But like I said, it was only in its baby steps, but it was a great, great beginning to find a permanent home for the seniors for their activities. And the range of services were discussed, and they went everything from technology instruction to feeding, to wood shops, card games, pool games, baseball, just a great place for seniors to go. And they really had brought to my attention the need for such a place in Gig Harbor. As there's, as people age, they lose their partners. Their family members have other things to do, and it's, it can be quite lonely for a lot of elderly people. So I was glad to participate in it, and I look forward to continuing to do so until we do end up with a place. Next meeting is in April.
Great, thank you so much for that report. Councilmember Lykins and Barber, you have lights on still? Just making sure I didn't miss. Oh, it did. It turned off. Okay. Great. Announcement of upcoming meetings is attached to this agenda, and it's online as well. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.